I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. Do we have roll call? Oh, I'm sorry. This is, we have to stand for the flags.
... United States of America, to the Republic which sustains us, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now, roll call, please.
Councilmember Murray.
Present.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Here.
Mayor Protemwall.
Here.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
And Councilmember Woodard.
Present.
That concludes roll call.
Thank you. Do we have any late changes to the agenda? Thank you very much. So next is public comments. Do we have any public comments?
No one signed up in person or registered online, and there were no written comments this week.
Okay. All right. So, next, Mayor Protemwall, consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to approve the consent calendar items A, B, and C.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and next is our proclamation for Nauru's. Is that how it's pronounced? And we have Councilmember Erin Murray to read it, and then whoever is going to be the person that is going to be receiving it can come up, and then we'll do a photo after that. And it's going to be right there. It's not on.
Ah, oh, now I'm definitely on. Thank you, Jennifer. And thank you for all of our visitors. It's great to have such a good audience tonight. So this is our City of Mountain Lake Terrace proclamation for the celebration of Nauru's 2025. Whereas, Nauru's, the traditional celebration of the spring equinox, is a time of joy, renewal, and the embracing of new beginnings, observed by millions of people around the world. And whereas, Nauru's, which marks the beginning of the new year in various cultural calendars, is a festival of peace, unity, and the shared values of hope, prosperity, and respect for nature. And whereas, Nauru's is celebrated by diverse ethnic and cultural communities, including, but not limited to Afghan, Azerbaijani, Baluchi, Chechen, Hazara, Kazakh, Kurdish, Kyrgyz, Leg, 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 Lesjin, sorry, Pashtun, Iranian, Tatar, Tajik, Turkmen, Uger, and Uzbek communities, each of whom bring their rich traditions and customs to the celebration of this auspicious day. And whereas, Nauru's is also a significant religious observance for various communities, including the Baha'i faith, which marks this day as a holy day of joy and reflection, commemorating the unity of all humanity. And the Zoroastrian community, which observes it as a time of spiritual renewal, honoring the triumph of light over darkness, and the importance of good thoughts, words, and deeds. And whereas, the City of Mountain Lake Terrace is proud to be home to individuals and families from all backgrounds, and it is committed to promoting cultural understanding, celebrating diversity, and fostering an inclusive environment where all communities can thrive. And now, therefore, Mayor Kyoko Matsumoto Wright, on behalf of the Mountain Lake Terrace City Council, does hereby proclaim March 20th, 2025, as Nauru's. And I would love to invite one of our Diversity Equity Inclusion Commissioners up to share a few words, and then we'll invite our other visitors up to receive the proclamation.
Thank you. I'm very thankful that City of Mountain Lake Terrace acknowledged this cultural significance of Nauru's, and especially calling out specific communities such as Azerbaijanis, Tatars, Turkmen's, Baha'is, who are usually overlooked in the community. Proclamations may be just symbolic, but the symbolic gesture has an importance if you feel invisible. And this is just one of the steps that Mountain Lake Terrace has taken in the last few years to show that we're an inclusive place here. I am continuously proud of the City of Mountain Lake Terrace for all the efforts such as the community outreach, the community discussions of Mountain Lake Terrace Academy, always showing the public that these people are not just bystanders, but they're an integral part of the community, and they can actually make an impact in our society. So, thank you for acknowledging this, and happy Nauru's to the entire humanity, whether you have celebrated this entire life, or this may be the first time you're hearing about this holiday, but regardless, happy Nauru's to all humanity, because we are flowers of one garden and fruits of one tree. Thank you.
All right. Can we have all of our visitors come up and receive the proclamation? Yeah, either, I think if you, the family, wants to come join me here at the podium, or maybe in front, so people can see you, Elliot. We've got a lot, so yeah, maybe the rest of our visitors can join our Councilmember, yeah, Ryan, and we could do a big photo. Do you have anything you'd like to say, Malia?
Okay. My lovely neighbor Erin, this is, this is so wonderful. I just want to say how happy this makes me. This is such a wonderful step in the creation of bonds of unity and oneness in a, in a divided world. And I just am so happy that we can be here tonight and to see all of you.
Oh, and we're so happy, we're so happy to have you here. So thank you for coming, and thank you for...
I'd like to say something, too.
Do you want to say something, too?
I would like to say something.
All right.
I love, I like to be with you.
Oh. Thank you, Ellie. We'd like you to be with us, too. All right. Would you like to join us for pictures? Do you want to? You're welcome. Good to see you.
Okay. That was a great turnout. Okay? All right. Okay, so next is our presentation on the update to the Urban Forest Management Plan with our Stormwater Program Manager, Laura Reed. And I don't know if this is going to be your, your last time presenting, or are you going to come again? Yes, you're going to be presenting tonight on several things, but...
How's this, is that better? Okay, great. Okay, well, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, I am happy to be here today to share with you the progress that has been made.
You need to bring your microphone closer.
Is it, is it not close enough? Okay. How about that? Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. On the Urban Forest Management Plan, and let me just put this into slideshow mode. Okay, great. First of all, because it is a grant requirement, I wanted to say that funds for this project were provided by the State of Washington Department of Natural Resources Urban and Community Forestry Program. And let me just move on. So tonight, I don't need a decision from you, but I am interested in what you think of what we've put together so far. A consultant city staff and resident team have been working together on this plan since June, and we have made quite a bit of progress. We have a rough draft, and we will be coming to you for, with a quite finished draft, and to seek your approval for the plan in April or May. The council goals that are met by this plan are environmental sustainability and resiliency, and an informed and engaged community. I'd like to stress that this is a truly a community-led process. In fact, the goals that you see up on this screen were put together by one of the key residents who worked on this project, Audrey Meyer, who is here today in the audience. These are the goals that the plan, unify the plan, and the emphasis is on these five notes. Engaging the community regarding the value of trees, maintaining healthy trees on public property, retaining large trees on private and public property, growing the tree canopy, and that includes planting new trees, and knowing whether the tactics that we're using are going to be successful, and adapting the plan is necessary. Currently, the city is at 32, 32 and 1/2% tree canopy as per total area, but our goal would be to increase that tree canopy to 37% over the next 25 years to 2050. So what will be, what will be in the plan when you see it next? We have a very robust public engagement and communication strategy. We'll be sharing the results of our two public surveys. We have canopy goals by planning zone in the city. There will be a section showing how our tree program compares to others, and to benchmark what we have versus other communities. And then, of course, there's the data, the street tree inventory, the recommendations for maintenance, and then mapping. Okay. So, in the plan, some of the key recommendations are to acquire some more expertise on trees to really move and implement, move forward and implement the Urban Forest Management Plan. We also need to start improving our public tree maintenance to be more proactive, and to start looking at our trees as green assets rather than something that we deal with when it's an emergency. There's a real need to start training our staff on how to prune, how to plant, how to take care of young trees, how to up our, our standards so that we, when we do capital improvement projects, we protect trees, we plant the right kind of trees, we allow for enough soil for the trees to grow well. And then, the last, of course, is to look at how we're doing over time, and then adapt the program as needed. We had really, really good participation in our public tree surveys, and that's in no small measure due to the fact that we had volunteers who were going door to door and dropping off flyers to try to get participation, especially in communities where we hadn't had as much before. We also reached out to businesses, community groups, to the high school, and I think the numbers that we got back really kind of showed that level of effort. Education and technical assistance were kind of the highest priorities for people, and we have, we wanted to ask and find out how people felt about the idea of having permits for removal of trees on private property, which is something many of our neighboring communities have. It appears that the community is somewhat, is divided on this, with 56% supporting and 44% opposed. As part of our public engagement and communication strategy for the plan itself, I believe there's an opportunity to not just, you know, implement the Urban Forest Management Plan, but we can also get credit toward our stormwater permit requirements from ecology by making the, assessing, improving the perception of trees as, the value of trees through a behavior change outreach campaign. A lot of times, people seem to have trees on their property that they're concerned about, but they don't really know what to do about it. There's a lot of, a lot of good materials that are out there in terms of videos, written materials. We could provide some live training. We're not going to create any of this stuff. We're just going to make it available to people. I also think that it's important to support our volunteers. Our volunteering rate is way above a lot of the other communities out here, and this is something that we can really build on. I, I think it's important that we nurture, you know, kind of our community partnerships to reach less accessible residents, maybe some people who've just moved to the city, people who might not be thinking about trees in terms of the overall environment, but they have a tree that they're concerned about. They might take it down, or they might keep it, depending on the kind of information that they receive. I also think it's important that we develop a recognition program for stewardship of large trees and promote the Heritage Tree Program. And then, underlying all of this is we need kind of consistent talking points to bring across to people that trees are not inherently risky on their property, but they do actually have a lot of benefits. This is a draft tree canopy goals by planning zone. I know that these are not the names that we are currently using for our zones, because we've just recently updated them in the, in the comprehensive plan. And I think it's a good place to note that, that part of the comprehensive plan had goals about tree canopy and increasing tree canopy, which will be fulfilled by the Urban Forest Management Plan. This is just kind of a quick rundown on the street tree inventory that we've completed. We have almost 7,000 street trees in the city, just an astonishing number for the size of a community. And this kind of shows you their condition, their different kinds, the different species that we have, and also the size classes in a summary way, though there'll be much more in the plan itself. I wanted to bring before you some potential options for the implementation of the plan, including costs, who would do the work, all that kind of stuff. But I wanted to, to show it to you in a way that sort of says, you know, this option, it's a cumulative kind of model. So everything that's in option, option two includes everything in option one plus the additional stuff in option two. So as you go forward and add more options, of course, the cost and the complexity increase. I think the, you know, the baseline option to kind of implement the, the minimal amount for the, from the Urban Forest Management Plan would be to assign to existing staff a lot of the workload to implement the plan. Then, I think we also need to have a small community outreach nonprofit contract for a tree-centric nonprofit that would help us to work with volunteers, deliver trainings, all those kind of things that we need to do, because it would be a lot of work for the staff themselves to handle that on top of their regular duties. And then also, there's adding a minimal amount of money to the street fund in order to remove the hazard trees that were identified during the street tree inventory. Option two would be to add half of the, of the overall number of trees that we think we're going to need to be able to grow the canopy over time. And then to hire a seasonal employee to both plant and water those trees during the first critical summer. This, I think, is a great value for the city, because it provides a lot of work for, for a small amount of money, but also provides good job training for somebody who wants to get into this line of work. It would also be adding a bit more money to the removal. It would allow us to do more critical pruning on larger trees, and then also have a on-call arborist for 10 hours a week to provide some technical expertise that's much needed. Option three is the preliminary staff recommendation, which is to purchase the full amount of trees, 137 trees per year, to replace the trees that have died or been removed, you know, over the years. And this would require watering, of course, the trees to survive the first summer. This would also involve getting a 20-hour-a-week on-call arborist, which would really allow us to move forward and implement a lot more of the recommendations from the Urban Forest Management Plan. Option four would be to go the full distance to implement tree removal permits on private property. This would, I believe, require the hiring of a full-time city arborist, because there's a lot of work that needs to be done in terms of evaluating applications, handling questions, taking care, you know, issuing and following up on the permits and the enforcement piece. I think that it's the consensus of the team that this would actually be quite, I'm sorry. I just noticed that the, that these slides are not quite, quite the right version for the cumulative cost. That the, this would be not the recommended thing to do right now, because we're just not ready for this. But maybe in a few years, if we see how the process goes for the engagement strategy, working with people, and if that does not work, then this might be the next step. Okay, this is, this is, these are not... Okay.
For what it's worth, ours says 267, 350.
Yeah. The, the problem was that I, there was a bit of work while I was out of the office that indicated that we need to change the slides, but in fact, the costs are a bit lower, because the way that I put this together was that, you know, you don't need an on-call arborist if you have a full-time arborist. So I can find those costs and send them out to you later. But the important thing to, to see is what, you know, what you would get for the additional costs that would be added in. This is a draft of the program planning for the, for, you know, for, to implement the plan. The green boxes are jobs that are already in existence. This would be additional workload for those folks, and then the blue ones would be additional adds, the blue, you know, the city arborists or the seasonal labor or tree maintenance. And I think that's, that's pretty much it. I just wanted to share with you what we have put together so far, and ask if there are any questions, or if you've had any feedback.
Do we have any questions or comments? Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a great beginning for our trees in Mountain Lake Terrace. We have a lot of trees. Of course, mostly are Douglas fir. And I'd like to see where it goes. I know that with our city founded before 1950, when they planted all the homes, they left the trees around the homes, and people really didn't know anything about trees, and just let them go. And then, they had damage to their foundation and their house and that. So, correct tree planting is important, and I know that's part of this, and where to put them, especially on the parking strip. I know 30 years ago, I lived in, well, 35 years ago, I lived in Linwood, and I remember my neighbor planted giant sequoias for a hedge, and it lifted the sidewalk up two and a half feet, so you couldn't walk on the sidewalk. So it's important to know, you know, what trees to plant where, and especially on the street. I think there's still some more investigation that goes into that, because I think still some of those roots are going under the sidewalk, not affecting the sidewalks, but they're now affecting the, the street. And most of the streets in Mountain Lake Terrace are asphalt and a lot of root stuff there. So I don't know if we need to re-investigate on the street trees, what we should have there. But anyway, I think it's a great beginning, and long-lived trees.
Well, I mean, you're absolutely right, that unfortunately, a lot of the native trees really do not make good street trees here. They're, you know, they're either overstory trees, which are way too big, or they're understory trees, which love shade and don't love being exposed to the kind of conditions that they would be exposed to on, you know, on streets, plus there's the whole issue of aggressive roots. So we do have a list of street tree varieties that have non-aggressive roots and are much more, much better suited to the life of a street tree. So, that's true.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. I still think the campaign, "Not every, not every tree is ready for street life," is waiting to happen. That said, I wanted to just thank our neighbor here. Thank you for your work, obviously along with the staff as well, but to know that this has been truly a community member who wanted to get involved is amazing, and who has stayed involved and used her talents, and again, worked very well, it seems like, with the city. So for what that's worth, just want to make sure we said that out loud. And now, just jumping to, just so I have my own edification, let's just look at option two. When you say hire seasonal interns, 16,000, and that'll come from the storm funds, is that obviously not already budgeted for, but would be able to be met by that? Is that effectively what that's saying there?
The Stormwater Fund has capacity.
That's what I'm asking.
For this.
That's the word I needed.
Yes. And I think it's, you know, the, the stormwater permit that just came out in 2024 lists tree canopy support as a, a stormwater objective. And so I do think that there's a good tie between these two programs.
Perfect. Thank you. That was my only question. Thank you.
Councilmember Sonmore?
Well, Laura, I just want to say thank you for all you've done for our city, and I appreciate everything that you know about the trees and fixing a lot of the ponds and, and doing a lot for us. So that's the first thing I want to say. And of course, thank you to Audrey and Jeff for being on the parking rec and doing so much for the tree. What I'm wondering, too, is all of our building that's going on, you know, we're almost going to double in capacity in the next 20 years or close to it. Are we going to have to heavily rely on city properties to house a lot of these trees? Or have we looked at what... Or have we looked at what we're doing more on a lot of the developments that are coming in? Because on 44th, of course, you had brought that one picture and they cut down those beautiful trees and nothing's left where they're putting up the car wash. And so I have concerns about how we're building in the city. But I wanted to know, too, do we have any trees that we're purchasing in 2025 and 2026?
For, for the, for the city, on the part of the city?
Or, or like we did two years ago, where you could get a tree and the city would plant it for you?
That was, that was a grant-funded project that the grant has expended. But, well, Parks Department has planted quite a few trees, so they should give credit to, to, as part of the mitigation from sound transit. And so they are planting quite a few trees here in 2025. But I think that future tree planting depends on whether the City Council wants to approve, you know, this, this plan to go forth and try to sort of bring it into the annual budget. You know, we plant, we, we get rid of trees, the trees die, but there's an ongoing planting effort in the right of way and on city property.
And that's the scary part with budgets happening all over Washington State and budgets getting so scarce. But you're saying that stormwater could be built into purchasing these trees each year?
Yes. And trees, you know, these trees are not very, they're not very expensive. I mean, we're talking probably $20,000 for, you know, all the trees you would need. And then there's the certain, then there's a, the necessary watering and care of the trees over the first summer. And that's probably all they would need to get launched.
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Laura. Appreciate the presentation. And I'll wait till the next one to, to say, you know, how much I appreciate you. But I guess I did have one question. So in looking at option three and talking about the, the purchasing 137 trees per year meets the recommendation, the recommended tree replacement rate for us to increase our canopy 4.5% over 25 years, does that include any sort of anticipated tree loss? Or is that just assuming we retain all of our current trees and these are all net adds?
This is a calculation that was done by the consultant. And so I'm not exactly sure how they came up with it, but they're pretty good at looking at sort of, you know, what we, what we have, what you could expect, you know, some sort of attrit, attrition that you could expect over time, and then this would be replacement.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I guess I'd be curious about that because I love that we are at 32% tree coverage, and I love the idea of getting to 37%. And, you know, I do think as, as we continue to see development and growth, where those trees are might need to shift. And so I guess I would just love to understand, you know, how we're planning for that in a way that, that helps us to continue to build that tree canopy as we also see, see more folks come into our communities. So other than that, I just, I will say, I particularly appreciate, I think there's lots that I loved here. You know, I think looking at trees as assets and the community engagement pieces, but particularly the wayfinding for residents, I think that is a really critically important part. I think we have lots of folks who love their trees and don't necessarily know how to navigate having trees, right? Or what to look for, or what resources are out there. So I think the idea of helping to guide people to good resources about their, their trees on their own private property, I think, is a great resource. And I would love to see us make sure we are, are getting the word out there heavily once we get to that place. So thank you all for all of the work. I think it's a great plan. I like option three. I think option three makes a lot of sense and would support moving forward with that.
Anyone else? Councilmember Tim Wall?
Say that again. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And yeah, Laura and Audrey, you guys did an amazing job on putting this together and continuing to move forward and provide us some great options to consider. You know, I have to back up and say how important tree canopy is, you know, as much as I travel and fly into airports all around the world, I still love flying into Seattle because of all our trees and the greenery and how amazing this area truly is. And the fact that we're stepping up and taking action to be able to increase our tree canopy, to ensure trees are here now and into our future, make, should make us all proud and appreciate, again, the work that you guys have put in. Really love the options to consider. I think, obviously, we'll want to, as Councilmember Woodard pointed out, we do want to, and Councilmember Salmore pointed out, we do need to consider how all the different options impact the different funds. But I, I love the direction we're going, love the, the potential impact it has. I think it's Councilmember Ryan has pointed out, we've got his story you may or may not know. When I first moved into Mountain Lake Terrace, my home was a new development. And a tree fell on my roof, and the branch came within three feet of me sitting in my, in my office. So I am particularly, appreciate the need to ensure we are doing a good job monitoring where and how the plant, you know, the trees that are planted and the roots system and how that impacts the trees that, through development and, and the, and the streets and the, anyway. So I appreciate the need to address all of these things. Interested more, hearing more about the, the arborist and how we, what needs there are for having one on call versus on staff versus, you know, how, you know, how valuable is it, was it 10 hours per week versus et cetera? So learning more about that, learning more about the funds and how it impacts the various funds. Interested in identifying opportunities to get grants for trees, for more trees and for other areas within the, our plan and the various options of how we may be able, may be able to help fund it in moving forward. But again, really appreciate all the work that you guys have done in bringing this forward and keeping us moving forward and keeping our tree canopy growing here in Mountain Lake Terrace. Thank you.
And, and thank you for mentioning that because actually, that reminds me that there are many options to how this could be fulfilled. I mean, we could do a job share with another city, for example. We, you know, it could be a limited-term engagement or LTE. There are also, there's options for grants, and I think that there may be options for grants for job training option, you know, the sort of positions. For example, that, that internship position, apparently there are grants at the state level that we could apply for in order to underwrite some of that cost.
Okay. I don't see any other hands coming up. I looked at that chart and I know that we were trying to get to 25% canopy coverage. And I, and the goal looks like it's going to be 36%. Where are we right now again? I couldn't find that number.
32, we're about 32, 32 and a half.
Oh, so we are over the 25.
Yeah, we're, we're over 25.
That was our goal in the past. I remember that.
Oh, right. Yeah. I don't think we, maybe there wasn't the tools available or the, you know, to do the canopy cover assessment at that point? And so people were just sort of estimating what the canopy cover was.
Maybe.
Yeah.
But I, but I know that, you know, I remember when, when Brian's neighborhood was all, we called it the woods. It was, it was second-growth timber there and, and then you, yeah, and, and that portion in the front part, as you enter your development, is all trees still. We so-called that the woods, too. It's teeny little woods. But I know that places like that are disappearing. And when the car wash went in, I know that cherry tree, that, that was the one thing I'm thinking, are they going to tear that cherry tree down? Yes, they did. Two cherry, cherry trees. But anyways, there are any more, no more questions, we can go on to the next one. But this, this is something that we're going to go back to again and again because we're really, we're really, as, as the climate changes, we really are understanding what trees can do. Because I know in the summertime, when you're looking for a parking space, you don't look for a parking space out where the sun is, you'd look for a parking space right next to a tree. So, okay, I think we're done with this, so we can move on to the next one, which is still going to be with you.
Yes.
And that'll be the review and vote on inter-local agreement for Water Resource Inventory Area.
Yes, thank you. And I just want, yeah, you, my successor will be back to talk to you about this in April or May. So I just want to, okay. Yes, so I'm here today to talk to you about the renewal of the Water Resource Inventory Area 8 inter-local agreement. This is a 10-year ILA that the city has supported for the past 10 years. This is a regional association or regional partnership that works towards salmon recovery. The, over the past 10 years, WIRE-8 has accomplished a tremendous amount, including awarding 1031 grants for habitat restoration, outreach and monitoring, planting 163 acres of riparian areas, reconnecting over 70 acres of floodplain and re, restoring over 45 acres of stream corridor to help better, create better conditions for salmon populations in the Puget Sound region. They, this is a highly effective organization. We have supported them in the past at about 1% of their overall budget. So this is at, for the year 2025, this would be $7,844. I would recommend that we continue to support them even though we don't have a salmon-bearing stream in the city. We are all upstream of salmon-bearing areas in the state. And I think this is a good way to help restore this important feature for the Pacific Northwest. So the recommended motion is to authorize the city manager to sign the 2026 through 2036 WIRE-8 ILA. And if it's possible to do that tonight, that would be great.
Any questions before we go take a vote on that? Does anyone have any questions, comments? All right. Mayor Tim Wall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to authorize the city manager to sign the 2026 to 2020, 2036 Washington Resource Inventory Area 8 inter-local agreement.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Are there any, are there any comments?
Yeah.
That was supposed to be before the vote.
Yeah. No, that's all right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to, as, as Councilmember Murray pointed out, this is our opportunity, our last opportunity to appreciate.
Oh, that comment. Yes, we don't, we don't want to, I have Laura leave without us saying that we're going to miss you a lot. But anyways, who wants to be first? Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity. And Laura, I just want to thank you for all of your, you know, care and passion that you've brought to your role. I just, I think, you know, what a great example of a public servant and the, the impact that, that working in the public sector can have. And so I'm very excited for you and, you know, kind of as you, you move forward in life. But we will definitely miss you but are really grateful for, for the years that you spent here at Mountain Lake Terrace and the, the significant impact that you've had, you know, and the work that we do and then the community at large. So thank you for everything.
Thank you. I really appreciate that, and I appreciate the opportunity to work with you over these years.
Who wants to be next? Councilmember Woodard?
Yeah, we'll go in reverse order here. So, yeah, I'll keep mine simple and just say thank you. What an honor it's been to work alongside you and to be a resident, knowing that you're overlooking our city. I'm thinking everything from adopted drain, you know, I've been doing that for years, but then we turned it into a process, and so I was always one just checking in. I, you're part of Ivy League. I hope that continues in some capacity, so maybe we'll see you on your private life side. And not have to give you assignments and just enjoy. But yeah, as we were just hearing from our council member, just thank you so much for the role that you've, that you've played, but the example that you've set. So, thank you.
Councilmember Ryan?
Wanted to ditto all that, but thank you for bringing up areas we never see in our city but are very important. And they're plugging up the roads and that, and we wonder why we're driving down the road and all of a sudden it's two feet of water. And we wonder why. And you're looking out for us for those areas. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Mayor Tim Wall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, Laura, I can't say how much I've really appreciated working with you and having you on board with the city. It's been an absolute pleasure, just first of all, for simplifying a very complicated issues and challenges to make it clear what we need to do and how we need to do it and, and what the value is in doing what we're adopting, the policies we're adopting. From critical areas, that was the first challenge I remember. Your predecessor was overcomplicated, a complicated issue and made it harder for us to really understand what we needed to do and how we need to do it. And then you came in, was a breath of fresh air, made it very clear and obvious and gave us simple solutions for addressing challenging problems. Your PowerPoint presentations, you were the leader in our city in, in giving great PowerPoint presentations. I think that your example, that you were able to share with the rest of staff did, brought us to where we are now with very clear, well-done PowerPoint presentations, your presentations on everything, the work that you've done on stormwater management, again, critical areas, now the trees, it's just, the storm, you know, the drains, everything that you've done has just been so, what was the one we just did that was like monumental, you know, where you started years ago and then brought it around to what we, a policy we just adopted recently on something? I don't remember, but it was amazing.
The tree code or the, or, I'm not sure. There's, there's a few codes that I've worked on.
Yeah, I know. There's just so much you've done that it's, it's, it's hard to, but there is, there is some project that you had did, you know, you had started as a volunteer or something, a young staffer years ago.
Oh, yes. Right, the tire particles with the six.
There you go.
Yes, exactly. Yes, I actually worked with Gary back at the time, that's you at the time that we were doing that. So he probably remembers that.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's very exciting to see these, this treatment project go in. I think it's going to be wonderful.
That's right. And the work that you did back then contributed to what the policy, what, nationwide, worldwide, something?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that's just, that's incredible. And I, you should be so proud, but we, as a community, as a city, as a council, are so proud to have had the opportunity to have you on board, working with the city, doing the work that you've done. It's been amazing and great, and we really appreciate it. We're going to miss you, but you are certainly welcome to come visit and share your expertise and knowledge and, and friendship with the city at any time.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Congratulations again.
Yeah, thank you. Yes. I think, I feel like I've come a long way since the first, my first city council presentation where I was extremely nervous. But you have been very easy to work with and very supportive, and I really appreciate that over the years because, you know, it's not, it's not nothing to be, you know, to go in front of the city council as a staff person. It's nice to see so much support and understanding and good questions that I've gotten over the years. So thank you guys as well. All right. Take care.
I have one question for Laura. Why would you want to leave after all of this? And two, we have not hired your successor yet, so you can give back your plane tickets.
We have headed, yes. I think my husband would be very disappointed if I told him I was not going to go traveling with him after retirement.
No, I didn't say anything yet.
Oh, sorry.
But all I am going to say is that I agree with everybody. Brian said almost word for word what I was going to say because I was kept thinking, I couldn't understand stormwater for all these years. And then you came along and all of a sudden you simplified it and I, and made it so that I could understand what we're talking about. Yeah, I know, I knew basically what, what was going on and so on and so forth, but, you know, sometimes when you're in elementary school and you're on a and you're on a subject that you just don't understand, and all of a sudden they do it in cartoons, and then all of a sudden you understand the, the whole thing. And it just, it really happened that way. So thank you. We're going to miss you.
You're very welcome. Just remember, stormwater is just rain that falls on a hard surface and picks up stuff that shouldn't be in the creek.
Right, but it was explained to us in a very complicated way.
Previously.
Previously, yes. All right, so we're going to move on to the next, which is the review and vote on the trees for parks, Parks Contract Award. Jeff Betts, there you are.
Okay, good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem and councilmembers. I'm Jeff Betts, the Recreation Parks Director for the city. It seems like I'm always following Laura, the past few meetings at least. And she set me up very well for trees tonight. And previously, all the talk about salmon and all those things kind of overshadowed what I was going to do. But tonight, it just aligns perfectly. So as mentioned, tonight's agenda item, we're going to review an award of contract. And this is to At Work Commercial Enterprise for the Trees for Parks program, as we like to call it. And we kind of ripped that title off from Laura because she had Trees for Terrace. So we just kind of changed it, Trees for Parks here. So as was already mentioned once earlier today, that we have some funding that came from Sound Transit. So Sound Transit removed quite a bit of trees along the I-5 corridor a few years ago as part of the construction of the Linwood Link Light Rail Project. And as part of permit conditions for that construction, Sound Transit paid a fee in lieu of replanting those trees themselves. And that amount was for $256,793. So that fee helped mitigate some of those unavoidable impacts to habitat within that construction zone, really specifically along that I-5 corridor on each side. So the city entered to agreement with Sound Transit to utilize those funds to plant trees to replace the ones that were removed. And in 2023, staff worked with a consultant team to develop a plan to plant trees at a few local parks. And so that design work utilized that same funding source, and it spent a little over $25,000 in doing so. So, and in the process of that design work, we worked with the Neighborhood Park Improvement Subcommittee, as well as Recreation Parks Advisory Commission, to go through some of the ideas that they had and where we should be planting these trees and what made the most sense. And so in that process, we reviewed nine city parks, and three were identified as potential candidates. And so we looked at things like space availability, you know, access, desired tree canopy coverage. And so three identified were Bounder Park, Matt Hurvila Bicentennial Park, and Terrace Creek Park. So as we moved through that layout and trying to consider both passive-active areas and also the current master plans and existing conditions. For example, we took a look at Veterans Moro Park as a good candidate, but we knew that we were already going to be planting 300 new trees there. So it didn't make much sense to try to double that up of any sort. So we went through some of the different types of trees that would make sense in each area. And so a variety were selected. And it was really, the process took shape by trying to take a look at different height of trees and what would make sense next to roads or pathways, and make sure that shading would occur around, for example, playgrounds, and what would make sense some deficient areas. So a lot of work went into species and appearance of those trees and trying to get some year-round color. So due to some of the challenges related to Terrace Creek Park, we did eliminate it from this process right now. And really just because it's very hard to get in and out of there. Some of the areas that we've talked about planting were full of invasives and were also steep hillsides. So we, we figured that could probably eat up a lot of money in a hurry. So we wanted to make sure we got these two projects done first and then take a look after that. So I'm sharing the tree planting plan with you right now. And so there are a number of trees, well over 100 trees, to be planted there. And so it also incorporates the removal of a row of poplar trees on the west side of the park. And the reasoning for that is they are end-of-life trees that are considered a little riskier type of tree. Poplar and cottonwoods tend to fall apart when you don't expect them to. Even if they are healthy, they tend to fall apart at times when you don't expect them to. So these trees were considered by the planning process as something that would make sense to remove instead of waiting till there are a major issue which had been forthcoming. And so part of that, though, is that whole west hillside is engulfed in blackberries. So this, part of this process would be to remove all those invasives and plant new trees. So really something that's been a, a goal of the Bounder Park Master Plan for quite a while. A lot of these things merged well with what we wanted to do with the park. So very excited to see some of these potential changes and tree plantings that could really help playground users at Bounder, trail users provide some shade. And so that will really assist in that park. And then some of the other work to show you at Bicentennial Park, we removed quite a few trees due to some underground water. And we had some stormwater issues that one time, about 10 years ago, if everybody remembers. So there was some really wet areas back there. And we corrected what we thought was probably an issue with the way the stormwater was running. Well, that ended up eliminating quite a few trees that we had to go out and remove that died. Remember, we removed about 40, I think 44 trees out there over the course of two years. So this is really a good chance to replace those trees with more diverse species and more color. And so I think it's going to make a large impact on that park. And we've had quite a bit of input also from some of the neighbors. So we interacted with them about what would make sense next to their fence lines. And anytime we walked out there, most of them, we had quite a few walk out to talk to us. So very interesting. And I think it's going to be a really good product to finish out there. So additionally, on this planting plan, we have tree detail. This is all information we gave the, the bidders. There was also proposed tree species on this. You can see what they would look like when they're grown with some of the color and size with all the different things that we take into account. So part of this bid process, the city utilized the MRC Small Works roster, which is the Municipal Research and Services Center. And we advertised a call for bids on February 20th. The city received six bid proposals on the closing date, March 6th. And that low bid was determined non-responsive and was rejected. So the parent low bidder was At Work Commercial Enterprises LLC, though. And they were evaluated and termed responsive and responsible. So that bid amount is $138,955.96. We wanted to incorporate an 8% contingency, which would bring us to a construction budget of $150,072. The Parks Tree Planting Plan, as mentioned, was discussed with the tree board numerous times, as well as the Recreation Parks Advisory Commission at meetings over the past few years. And so tonight, staff would recommend that we authorize the city manager to sign the attached contract. And this can also be accomplished with, actually, it won't be a consent agenda tonight. This is just review and approval. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions, but Councilmember Somer?
Jeff, can you explain? We, let me go back up to the. We received $256,793. We already spent $25,131. And now we're about to spend and not to exceed, but it's really around $139, $150,000. What are we doing with the remaining funds?
We're trying to figure that out right now. So not knowing what this bid was going to come back as, it looks like we have about $70,000 plus-ish.
$79,590, yeah.
Yes, that amount. About that much available, depending on what happens with the contingency with this project. But we are looking at trying to do Terrace Creek Park because that plan is already done, the planting plan. So it's something that we're looking at trying to do next is just get one going, and then we'll take a look at the next to try to get that going as well. There's also some other ideas that we've been talking to Public Works and the Stormwater Program Manager about potentially trying to plant some additional street trees where it makes sense. So just trying to throw around some ideas on how to make sure we get more trees on the ground.
House Member Murray.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Jeff. Appreciate the presentation and really excited about all of the, the new trees. And appreciated hearing about the thoughtfulness that kind of went into, you know, which trees were selected, where they were located, and appreciate everybody involved in that. And particularly wanted to just name, I appreciated you mentioning, you know, playground shade. I know that was something, you know, just shading and weather-related ways to, to make things, you know, make, make our open spaces accessible when, when there's hot weather and also when there's rain. And so I think hot weather in particular. I know when my kids were younger, we loved going to Evergreen because there's a lot of shading at that park, right? And so I think thinking about those things is, is great. I guess I would be curious if, because it does, it looks great at Matt Hurvila. I guess I'm curious about the accessible playground down at Lake Ballinger. It looks like the trees that are south of that are smaller trees. Like, I guess, I don't, I don't know enough about how big was it, an eastern redbud gets. But I guess in looking at the Lake Ballinger one and the accessible playground, do we think those trees will get big enough that there will have, that there will be some summer shading from them?
That's the goal. I think the eastern redbud is not as big of a tree.
Okay.
As here, it's considered a small deciduous tree. But there's really a balancing act because if we put a lot of really big trees on the east side of that park, potentially could cause issues for some neighbors as well. They've expressed that in when we did Lakeview Drive plantings for, for the walkway down there. But it's kind of a tough one where you don't want to put too many big trees, but we also want to provide shade. So I think that if, if we feel like it's not sufficient, then we can adjust and we have those extra dollars to do that as well.
Yeah, okay. No, I appreciate that and appreciate the feedback about the neighbor comments. I was curious about kind of the, the, the west side of the park versus the, the east side of the park. And so I, I think that helps, helps with understanding and appreciate that we have some additional funds to kind of see how this plays out and go from there. But appreciate all of the work and really excited to see all of the new trees.
Anyone else? House Member Woodard.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm on selfish lane today. I, I didn't see what the timeline was. I'm just curious whether or not July would be in play because all of a sudden, your question made me think, oh, I wonder what the view will look like in the years to come if we keep doing the 3rd of July down there. That's not a reason not to plan. I was just thinking, immediate coming up. I imagine you have to block the park off to do all of this. So maybe you don't.
No, I don't think we're going to have to block the park off. But each tree will have their own support, just similar to what you would see when we did the street trees, things like that, to keep them upright.
Yeah.
I mean, there's, there's bound to be some failure here and there of, of trees. Some of them die on their own. Sometimes there's vandalism and things like that that will look to replace those. But I don't expect a, a full park closure to do these. I think that we'll, we'll work on each section at a time is what I anticipate. We're looking at starting the work here shortly. So I would say in April, they plan on starting work.
Perfect.
That way, we're starting kind of a wetter time still. And then it shouldn't take long, only a few weeks' time prior to be done. So they should all be in place by that July 3rd event.
House Member Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Jeff, for the presentation. I think it's great on this presentation, you're showing that you are a horticulturist and arborist. And beyond that, I'm really glad you're with our city because I know you do a lot of grant writing. And I didn't know that you knew more plant names than I did for trees. And, and I also really like on your map here how you are recognizing how invasive poplar trees are. And because I know on my house, I had three of them. And they took out my sewer, they took out my fence, and they took out half my yard. So it's really kind of expensive. So just looking at that row there, I can understand that, how you'd want to put a different tree there. So anyway, congratulations and thank you for working with our city.
Anyone else? Mayor Protemwall, did you?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If everybody's comfortable, I will move to authorize city manager to execute the small work contract. And with At Work, probably put my eyes on would help, but Commercial Enterprise LLC in the form approved by the city attorney and in an amount not to exceed $150,072 for construction of the Parks Tree Planting Project.
Was there a second?
Yeah.
Okay, there's, it's been moved and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So number nine, how are we going to do this random draw for candidate names? Oh, they're all, it's like, oh, it's like.
It's a real random draw. So, yes, Mayor, we are planning to draw names to schedule the interviews for the council candidates. So I'm going to draw a name from this cup and read them for our city clerk to record. And the first one I draw will be the first interview. Is that right, Jennifer?
The first person that we're going to interview will be number one? Okay.
Yes. And as you know, we're doing interviews over two nights. So can you remind us how many interviews?
How many are each night?
There'll be nine interviews the first night and five the second night, followed by the executive session and appointment.
Okay, so here we go. Our first candidate will be Najib Saida. And I will apologize if I pronounced someone's name incorrectly. Our second interviewee will be Atman Riyad. Our third will be William Page. Fourth will be Chad Watson. I am number five now. Number five is Theodore Moriarty. Then we have Robert Castillo. Benjamin Ho. Michelle Delpion. Forrest Rada. Brian Malin. Malin. Michelle Seneschal. Philip Lewis. Julie Kimball. And Daniel Loma. So our, our city clerk will be notifying our candidates of the time and date of their interviews. Thank you.
So on, on the first night, where's, we start at 5:30?
Are we starting? Yes, the first night will be starting at 5:30.
And then we're doing nine?
Yes.
Okay, did we figure out what time we're getting out of here?
Well, the interviews are no more than 30 minutes. And of course, you can decide not to interview all of them. But I think you've all made that decision.
So I was just trying to do time in my head. All right, House Member Somer.
Will they get the questions in advance? That was decided that they would not get the questions in advance, to be fair. But all the information for the interviews will be going out tomorrow with their lineup. And they start at 5:30 and we're scheduled to end at 10:00. But the questions will not be going out in advance.
Anyone else have questions? All right. Well, it's exciting that we had 14 people who are interested. So that's, that's good news. We're, we're going to pick somebody. We're going to pick somebody. All right, and so next is the City Manager's Report. Is Carolyn going to be doing that?
Yes. Yes, good evening, Mayor and City Council again. Let's see, we have some exciting news this week. The bridge at Veterans Park was placed by Crane. So you can take a peek at it from that south entrance by the transit center if you're interested, but that was in quite an engineering effort to get that in there and also to travel across the pass, so we're excited for that. We welcomed two new employees to our finance team this week. We're very excited. We've been down three staff for quite a while. So we have a new senior accountant and a new finance coordinator working at the front desk. And the team is also working on getting ARPA reporting and end-of-year reporting done this month. Speaking of new staff, we have a new permitting specialist that will be starting on Monday, so another fresh face to visit at the front desk. And several of our CED staff were at training and getting recertified for various inspection-type certifications this week. The police hosted a regional interrogation and negotiation class this week, so you may have seen a lot of various police department cars in our parking lot. That was a three-day event. And we are seeing unfortunately an uptake in fentanyl overdoses this month, so our police have been active in responding to some calls related to that. This week, our staff had anti-discrimination and harassment training by Summit Law. And just a few reminders about some events coming up. This week, we're having our City Council Retreat on Saturday from 9 to about 4 o'clock. It will be at the Lodge at St. Edward's, and that will be available for the community on Zoom, and we'll be recording it if people want to watch it later. That night, there is the annual Spring Fling, which is our dance program's fundraiser and recital. So if you're interested, I will send you all a link to that. Next Wednesday, we have two events. We have the Fifth MLT Community Academy at the Recreation Pavilion, starting at 7 o'clock, a little bit later than usual, because we have some activities going on at the pavilion. And from 6 to 8, we're having here in this room, the Middle Housing and Housing Action Plan Open House. Happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Does anyone have any questions or comments? Okay. All right. And so next is the City, the Council Liaison Report. And shall we start over there with Councilmember Woodard?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. I'm in the middle of a stretch. Let's see, on the 10th, I had the honor of participating in a soon-to-be-released, I think it's a campaign, awareness campaign, there it is, with Providence Swedish on colorectal cancer, which is the month that we're in awareness-wise. And I will just say, in the spirit of things being abstract and then becoming crystallized, while there was a very important cause, I think folks may know African-American men in particular are impacted by colorectal cancer at a higher rate, at a younger rate, and at a higher death rate. And as timing would have it, as we finished wrapping, I got news that a friend of mine passed from colorectal cancer. So I'll just acknowledge that. On the 12th, we had, damn, I don't think I'm going to acknowledge that. Yeah, that's in my report.
Thank you. Next will be Councilmember Marie.
Thank you, Mayor. I missed our last regular meeting because I was sick, and I will just say, it's not too late to get a flu shot. So I know, I think Councilmember Woodard, you know, which I think provided us an update here recently, but we are still seeing, I mean, much higher than normal rates. And so I would encourage folks to try to mitigate, try to mitigate getting sick. It's not fun. So going back to February, I had a chance to attend our community conversation with, that we did in conjunction with Snohomish County Health District. I thought that was phenomenal. That was our bilingual event over at the library that we did in English and Spanish. And again, just shout out to our Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commissioners, who are integral in the conversations at those events, and just excited to continue to see us do that work and each time how new and different folks who haven't had a chance to meet before come. So appreciate all of the work that goes into that from city staff's perspective. On the 27th, we had our work session. The 28th, I went to the Edmonds School District Foundation's breakfast. I just, I was going to say, if you haven't had a chance to be around our young people here recently, would encourage you to do it. I feel like there are a few things that fill my bucket more and give me more hope, particularly when things are challenging, than seeing how phenomenal the young people across our school district are. They are just, they're so talented and passionate and smart. And I just, yeah, couldn't encourage you more to tune in and see what they are up to, how we are helping set them up for success, how maybe sometimes we're not helping set them up for success, and how we can help to fill those gaps. So appreciate all of the work that is done there, and it was really nice to see Councilmember Woodard, in his role as their Board President, lead a lot of the program and represent, you know, both the work that the foundation does as well as Mountain Lake Terrace so very well. On the 5th, had a chance to attend Puget Sound Regional Council's Economic Development District Board. That is one of my, the alternate for Snohomish County Cities to that board this year. I thought it was a good overview of the work that they're going to be doing over the next couple of years as they get prepared to put together a new economic strategy, starting in 2027. And so this year's work is really that analysis piece, so gathering feedback and input. So I would just encourage us as a city to think about, you know, what is important to us in terms of regional economic development. And there's going to be some opportunities for stakeholder engagement, and I will make sure to share those when they come up. And then had a chance to tune in to our Terrace Talk on the 12th, which I thought was great. I thought our city manager did a good job of talking about all of the different things that are going on in the city and appreciated that we had some great audience participation and questions. So encourage folks to utilize those events to come and learn more about what we're doing and to get your questions answered. And I, oh, I think I just didn't finish my list. On the 13th, I had my monthly city manager meeting and our work session, and I think that completes my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. House Member Somer.
Thank you. I serve on two liaison committees, and the first one is Left One. And Councilman Ryan also serves on that committee. I don't know the last time we have recognized them, so I would really highly recommend that we bring them in to recognize them. They are fabulous, and Rick and I enjoy every second with them. And then the other committee I sit on that I truly enjoy is, I always call it Park and Rec, but ARPAK. And you heard most of the conversations tonight that we've been talking about, so I won't go into that. And I also attended Terrace Talk. There were some good conversations on that, and I'll leave it at that. And then I just wanted to remind everybody that building bridges will happen at Mountain Lake Terrace High School this Saturday. Sorry, I was trying to look it up real fast. And they're having a booster fundraiser, and I think it's after our retreat. I'm trying to see what time it starts, and I don't see the time, but I just wanted to share that because we were just talking about the school and supporting our children, so I just wanted to put that out there. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you. House Member Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. On March 11th, I attended the Left One Retirement Board. 13th, we had our work-study session, and that's in my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor for Tim Wall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I also missed our, well, I passed on our last update, so I'm going back to February as well. I was going to apologize for my tardiness on that meeting. I was actually in an airplane when the meeting started and then wasn't, didn't want you to see me traveling out of the airplane, through the airport, into the car, and transportation onward. So I kept the cameras off. So I apologize for that, but I was happy to be able to attend the last portion of that meeting.
Listen in, at least.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So going back to, I did meet with, on the 25th of February, met with Sage Investment, who is considering the property down at Studio 6 and some of their plans for that. And so if I know some of you have met with them, and if you haven't, I encourage you to. They've got some great ideas of what they'd like to see happen potentially with that So encourage you all to reach out and talk with them. On the 26th, met with Snohomish County Tomorrow Steering Committee, or had the Snohomish County Steering Committee meeting, followed by the, our Community Academy. I think it was recorded on during the last time, but it was a great group of folks, and we really encourage to see all those that are participating in the academy and the potential for bringing them into the city and informing them about everything that we're doing. And it's just a great program and looking forward to seeing that continue and creating some great ambassadors through that program to help spread the word of all the great things we're doing here in Mountain Lake Terrace and have them be part of growing Mountain Lake Terrace in the future. On the 27th, had the Puget Sound Regional Council Operations Committee, followed by the Puget Sound Regional Council Executive Board Meeting. Just some quick highlights on that. One is, we all know that federal things are happening, and a lot of things are in flux and a lot of challenges, but did want to reassure us that the funding process through PSRC will remain intact. Those are federally designated funds that come to the region for distribution, and so we will continue looking at safety, climate, and equity as the key ways that we want, priorities that we're looking to expand our and fund our transportation projects here in the Puget Sound region. And so those funds are not in question and not in jeopardy. And so we really want to, while everything else is, that is an opportunity for us to be pursuing, to be able to help fund our projects here in Mountain Lake Terrace. Later that afternoon, the mayor and I also met with the city manager, got our monthly updates and conversations there. At 6:00 PM, Councilmember Woodard reported on this. Last time, we had our first City Finance Committee meeting in some time. And so just getting that off the ground and looking forward to having some great conversations about how we are addressing finances, especially now when we have such financial challenges ahead of us that we need to be addressing. So we'll have some interesting, good conversations there. And then I had our City Council meeting. Let's see, what else? So then I did call in on a couple of meetings while I was traveling, the City Council meeting. And then, of course, you heard, oh, the Snohomish County Tomorrow Exploratory Committee, just a quick update on that. We are, as we've talked about, expanding the opportunities of what we're addressing there. We're continuing to look at a number of different things, but we definitely have prioritized housing, economic development, and transportation infrastructure as key areas. We want to expand the role that we've been playing there. And then we're, just a continuing conversation, we'll be having several meetings over the next several months to really fine-tune what our recommendation will be to the Snohomish County Tomorrow Steering Committee. You heard, during our last work session, you heard some of my insights. You know, traveling is amazing, provides amazing insights to the rest of the world now it operates. You've heard some of what I saw in my five different countries, traveling through Asia in three weeks. The parks are just amazing. I stayed in for a few days in a master-planned community with 25,000 residents in less than .2 square miles. Think about that. I'll pause for a minute to let you, let that sink in. Our city, our four-square-mile city of 25,000 residents in .2 square miles. Amazing. And they did a great job, by the way, with their, as a master-planned community, of incorporating green space and tree trees and a wonderful park. Speaking again of parks and the need, I'd like to see us be doing more of, and they did a great job incorporating a number of different cultures. It was in Saigon, but they had a great portion of it that was Japanese garden and structures and things like that. It was great. And then another part was European, kind of European elements, and, but they just kind of incorporated all of this. And then they did do a great job of public art in any number of areas throughout Asia and incorporating it into the public spaces and to parks. The other thing I have to mention is, the last part, by the way, lest you think I'm just going to beach vacations, I was in Japan yesterday morning where it was snowing. But in Japan, the, they have an amazing transportation infrastructure. If you haven't been to Japan, it is fantastic what they've done there, and we could learn a lot of how they've put together the transportation and infrastructure to be able to help facilitate the movement throughout their country. While I'm in Japan, I can't, if you've ever been to Japan, I can't go without mentioning the magic toilets. Everywhere has, all public restrooms have magic toilets.
I don't think you know what that is.
I will let you explore the, but any rate, it's, I think we ought to be looking into that, as it turns out. Those are amazing toilets. Anyway, it was a great trip. Glad to be back, glad to be with you and have the opportunity to continue incorporating my observations and everything I pick up around and seeing how we can really expand addressing cultural opportunities here in Mountain Lake Terrace. So I think that will end my report for now. Thank you.
Did you want to go? Okay.
Thank you. Let me just power through this real quick. On the 12th, I had the opportunity to participate with the Northwest Civic Circle in a webinar with our neighboring cities, looking at Edmonds specifically and talking about our respective city's RFA process. They have a significant vote coming up. That evening, I too participated in Terrace Talk, which I did that online. On the 13th, I had my one-on-one with our city manager and then attended our study session that evening. On Saturday, the 15th, Snohomish County Black Heritage Committee's Youth Coalition put together a youth violence prevention, youth violence, youth violence prevention conference. Wow, too many Vs. Nonetheless, that was amazing, directed at youth, youth-led. It was an amazing experience. On the 17th, I actually had the opportunity to present in front of the Lindwood City Council on the update on the Lindwood Neighborhood Center. I bring that up in here to say the same offer we made there, we will make here, which is if we would like an update on where that stands now, that project. It's a little over 50% done. VOA would be happy to provide that update, and they're also doing, we are also doing hard hat tours, if that is of interest. And then on the 18th, which was Tuesday, I had the opportunity to go downtown and spend time with Washington Alliance for Better Schools. Our school district is actually a part of them. In the spirit of everything is in flux, as far as I'm concerned, today is a national day of mourning with the Department of Ed's attack underway right now, dismantling. And so nonprofits like these that have invested, they are particularly focused around STEM. And again, we're already a part of that. Our superintendent serves on their board. Their entire board is full of superintendents. So it's just to say they're doing some great work, but I encourage us to be thinking about ways that this council can support our students, which is to say that we also have some major cuts coming in our districts, which might position us to think differently about how we spend our, or invest our monies. And then lastly, today I was invited to join the Edmonds Waterfront Center. They did their Horizon Luncheon, and that was also exciting. I'll wrap up just by saying, my phone, my city phone, in the three years I've had this version, has rung four times, and I've missed twice. And so one call, I just found out I have a voicemail, which is to let that resident know that I did finally hear your voicemail. You got to forgive us when you don't get that many phone calls. You don't really think to actually look to see the voicemail portion of that. But I will give you a call tomorrow is the plan, but just know that we did see, or I did get your call, and I will return your call. That's the end of my report.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so for my report, on the 7th of March, I attended the Seashore Transportation Forum. And on the 12th, I went to this Terrace Talk, and then after that, to the Citizens Academy just for a short time, and that was at the Police Department. And then on the 15th... And then on the 15th, uh, at the library, I, we had a talk with, um, our state representative Cindy Do. And she had, um, the mayor of Mountain Lake Terrace there to talk about Mountain Lake Terrace and what's going on, um, in the state. And this Saturday, she'll do that same talk in Lindwood with the Lindwood Mayor. Uh, and we had a full house. We had a lot of people there, uh, very, very interested in what was going to be said. On the 19th, I attended the Citizens Academy last night, this time at the Public Works Department. And next week is going to be at the Parks and Rec Department. Um, and I think that the, the, uh, citizens who are students there are really, really enjoying learning about what happens in the city behind the scenes. I think they're really appreciating it. And then we got a, um, last, last week, we said happy birthday to a 100-year-old lady in, um, Mountain Lake Terrace, Mrs. Perrin. And they, um, sent pictures of her with her birthday cake, with her hundred, 100 stash and so forth. And, um, and they thanked us for, uh, doing this, um, recognition for their mother. And, um, they were very, very happy about it. So, and, um, and that's the end of my report. So next will be the new businesses. Anyone have any new business? Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to, uh, let everyone know, uh, we haven't, haven't really got any official, uh, notice on it. But, uh, for our summer event, it used to be the Mountain Lake Terrace Tour de Terrace. Uh, it is online at M L T cares dot com. So it's a Mountain Lake Terrace Festival. It's going to have a parade, live music, entertainment, pancake breakfast in the morning, fun run, craft inventor market, food trucks and a beer garden. It does not list the carnival. So it's a, just a regular event minus the carnival. Uh, Friday, July 18th, which is the third Friday in July through Sunday, July 20th. So I just wanted to let people know it is supposedly going to be happening and it's at M L T cares dot com. Thank you.
And, um, the carnival was already booked, apparently, by the time they tried to get them. I just have one thing. Um, I saw, saw it in, on social media and then I received, um, a letter in the mail of, that was about aging pipes. For us to, to pay, do, do we even pay for aging pipes? I thought the city took care of that. Yeah, it's, it's a form letter that comes to you saying that you, you have, you have aging pipes in your city. And so, uh, and they're going to fall apart pretty soon. And so you just pay into this system. And I forgot to bring it with me. I was going to bring it with me. And I thought that everyone got it in the mail. And I'm going to keep it because, um, I'm thinking, is this legitimate? Yes. Uh huh. So, um, and, and my house was built in 1984. I think yours is 1986. I, oh, you're even much, much younger. Uh, I don't think we're that aging yet at that time. The aging pipes, I think, are, are more the ones built in the early 1950s. But I, I'm really, really afraid of people falling for something like that. So I'll bring the letter next time. Let's, let's talk about it and see what, what we can do to, to, um, warn our, um, citizens about this. And that, unless anyone has anything else to add? I don't see anyone, that we are adjourned then. We're adjourned.